We're gonna call this meeting to order. It is our regularly scheduled council meeting of Wednesday, November fourteenth, 2018, and it is just after 5:30 PM. Mr. Mr. Aguilar, if you could please do roll call.
Councilmember Pot.
Here.
Councilmember Tesari.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Rigby will be marked absent. Mayor Lorrimore.
Here.
Okay, um, do we have any public comments?
We have received.
I don't see any.
We have received no public comments.
Okay, excellent. We are gonna be moving into closed session. Do we need to read anything?
I'll I'll announce the items just for the record. Um, two matters of, uh, in closed session. One is conference with legal counsel, uh, relation to the Ontiveros, um, case versus the city, and the second is a conference with labor negotiator, um, with respect to all unrepresented employees.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we're moving to closed session. Okay, well, good evening. We we actually started the meeting a little bit earlier with a closed session, and so we are returning from closed session. Ms. Vega, can you please report out of closed session?
Uh, yes, we met on two items. We met on two items. Um, there was no reportable action on the conference with labor negotiators, on the conference with legal counsel. The four city council members present voted unanimously to approve a settlement agreement with respect to that litigation.
Excellent, thank you. So, uh, we're gonna be calling this meeting to order. It is just after 6:30 PM. Uh, thank you, Ms. Vega. Now, before we call our regular council meeting to order, um, I wanna take a moment and actually, eventually, I'm gonna be switching seats here tonight. Councilmember Adam Rush, he was, uh, actually one of our, uh, he was the, uh, the the last of the original council members for the city of Eastville up here on the dais this evening. And, um, he was our first mayor. And so, in honor of that, I will actually be trading spots with him. This is gonna be his last city council meeting with us. He chose not to run again for, um, this coming year. So, um, I'll be passing the gavel off to him, and I I do wanna also say, uh, we are, well, I I appreciate the the friendship, um, but more than this, uh, this city is, uh, deeply, uh, in debt to all the efforts that you have put forward, and we are truly going to miss you up here. So, thank you, sir. Are these yours?
Yeah.
Is it record time here?
There you go. We always talk about it.
We're laughing because my, uh, record city council meeting is twenty-seven minutes. But that was about eight years ago. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, appreciate that. Mr. Aguilar, would you call roll?
Mayor Lorrimore.
Here.
Mayor Potem Rigby will be marked absent. Councilmember Tesari.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Here.
Councilmember Pot.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, just as a reminder, if you'd like to speak, uh, please fill out a speaker card. They are with our city clerk. And, uh, we will now move to our invocation. Is Father Patrick Kersh here? Father, would you please lead it lead us in our invocation?
Heavenly Father, Heavenly Father, thank you. We come tonight filled with hearts with gratitude for the gift of life and love which you give each and every one of us. We ask your assistance in our state with the fires, helping those who have lost loved ones, those who've lost property, continue to assist the firefighters, and all those aiding those misplaced because of the fires. We know how devastating this is, and we know that together we can help those individuals rebuild. We ask you to bless this meeting. May all of us here tonight who come be filled with the wonder of a new life each day that you give us, and that we have marvelous opportunities to make your name more known and more loved. We ask that you bless this meeting, bless the direction of the council, so that you will be done in all that we do. We thank you, and we praise you, and we bless you. We ask all these things through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. And now I'd like to introduce and invite to the podium a very very special young lady, Ms. Penelope Pot. You gonna lead us in our pledge? Would you please rise?
Are you gonna tell everyone, are you gonna tell everyone?
You gonna use the microphone?
Yeah, that'd be good. All right, what are you gonna tell everyone first?
Put your right hand, your heart ready again. My flag allegiance to the flag of United States of America. Until our flag lift, it stands one nation under God. If it's real, a reality, this is all.
Good job, sweetheart. Cup kiss. He did so good. All right, let's walk you down. You did really good, I'm so proud of you. So good.
Oh, okay. Nice job, Ms. Penelope.
Wait, you can't go yet.
So, in recognition and appreciation of coming to join us today, we have a certificate for you. Can you grab that? All right, your dad's gonna take a picture. Come over here.
One of the few people I'm taller than, so it's awesome.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to item number three additions and revisions to our agenda. I know there's some revisions, but, uh, Mr. Clerk, are there any additions to our agenda tonight?
Uh, there are no additions to tonight's agenda.
Okay, would any member like to add any item? All right, revisions, we're gonna reorder the agenda just a bit to accommodate, uh, Mayor Potem Rigby, so we're gonna take nine point three, nine point two, and nine point six first, and then we'll follow up with nine point one, nine point four, and nine point five. So, for those of you who are keeping score, uh, we're gonna start with nine point three first. Anything else? Nope, all right. Now we move to our presentations and announcements. Item four point one is presentation by the homeless outreach team. Uh, Captain Hedge, would you like to present the team?
I'd like to, uh, first introduce my, uh, Riverside County Sheriff's Department Homeless Outreach Team, uh, which is, uh, made up of two deputies that are, uh, work out of the Hoopa Valley Station, and I'll let them introduce themselves and, uh, give a little bit of background for each one of them.
My deputy, my name is Deputy Mike Vaskis. Um, I've been with the department for just over twelve years, worked a number of, uh, assignments, but am now here and, uh, enjoying it. I have the luxury of being, uh, close to you guys and working out of the facility here, your home station, and, uh, just happy to be here tonight.
I'm Deputy, I'm Deputy Alicia Espinoza. Um, I've been with the department for six years now, um, and like my partner, prior to this, I've worked, uh, a few different assignments, um, so I'm newer here on this team, uh, since about July, and happy to be here, happy to work for y'all.
So, we're gonna jump right into it. We appreciate you guys' time, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We were available at the end for any questions. I know they might rise, you might have seen the, uh, the PowerPoint, and if you haven't, we're, we just want you to make earmark the, uh, places where you might have some questions for us that we can be available to answer. So, our mantra is helping without handcuffs. As you might know, uh, oftentimes, um, homeless are, are, take a perspective in looking at cops as enforcement only, and that's not always the case. And so, we work in the capacity of trying to offer resources and connect people to resources who are either on the brink of homelessness or already homeless, and that includes a number of individuals, families, and, uh, children, adults, teenagers, at-risk youth, and things like that. Any number of, uh, and at any moment, we're looking at twenty-three hundred people, um, here in, um, Riverside County as homeless. Our pick count, which happens ju- January of every year, uh, we take a snapshot of of every city and every, um, unincorporated county area. We send people out and we take, try to take an accurate count. Again, people will say, well, how can you get all the individuals in one count on one day? It's a tough task. So, we work with volunteers, we work with partners, but our point-in-time count is just that. It's one snapshot of as many individuals as we can find. And HUD defines those individuals, a- as you can see, as homeless people who are living in a place that's not meant for human habitation, they're in shelters, they're in emergency housing, they're in transitional housing, and, uh, people who are just out on the streets. I'm sorry. So, I mentioned the pro- the pros and cons about the point-in-time count. Again, people say it's a snapshot, it's great, it's it's for us, a chance for us to get an accurate count of the individuals, but can we assess that in one day? You be, you can be the judge of that. I don't know that we can find every homeless person on one day or two days within a, uh, short amount of time, so. It's geared towards the East Coast, just so you kinda get a background of it. On the East Coast, January is cold, right? So, most people head to cold weather shelters or places that we are, that can actually live for a short time, transitional housing. And so, it's oftentimes a lot easier for us to get out there and do that. Here in Southern California, we enjoy the luxury of awesome weather, so you might have a, a population that may stay outside of the shelters, which we have to account for. Our goal is your homeless outreach team, for Alicia and I, we span the whole county, but we work in tandem with liaisons at every station. There's individuals placed at each station who are familiar with your, your streets, your common people, you have shopping centers, you have retail stores, you have people that come and go, um, and the deputies and the special enforcement team that you employ here, Deputy Harrington is one of them, he's very familiar with your, your, uh, citizens and the people that come and go. You have sometimes people who have calls for service that are generated over and over again, and sometimes that's part of our homeless, uh, population. So, working in tandem with him, these are our specific goals. We contact those individuals, identify who they are, um, get an accurate assessment of what we can do to help them, we document them, and then we refer them to services that might be able to help them. So, that's assisting them with, um, social services, sometimes referring them to diversion programs, rehabilitation, and things like that. Some of our partners that we collaborate with, the Department of Behavioral Health, and these are just the major players in what we do, uh, Department of Social Services, the Housing Authority, um, our nonprofit partners, Path of Life Ministries, which is just here in Riverside, downtown Riverside, and the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, Health to Hope, which is mobile clinics, um, that are provided by county staff and, uh, partner, in partnership with the nonprofit, and then our veterans, our U.S. vets. Some of the services that we offer in tandem with, uh, in collaboration with the county is rental assistance. Um, we're looking at permanent supportive housing, which is a long-term commitment to helping those individuals that may need assistance, and we have those who are looking at rapid rehousing, which is a short term, like a twelve-month, sometimes extended to two-year leg-up type program. We also offer physical and mental services, health services, substance abuse rehabilitation intervention programs, job training, there's a few nonprofits that actually offer job training, um, and placement, and then life skills coaches. Where does this all come from? You guys are very familiar with budgeting and WR COG, you're familiar with different funding sources, we've got heap funding coming down from, from different sources as well, and then the counties push to do that. So, HUD is the biggest, um, contributor to our homeless program here. We have the Continuum of Care, which is an umbrella for the county, and that is an entity that oversees all the homeless operations. We just met with Natalie Camorro, who is the Homeless Solutions Executive Staff Member for the county here with city staff yesterday to kinda tackle how your city's, um, approach should be to homelessness, and then private faith-based collaboration, again, organizations close by that are willing to step out and work, work in tandem with and collaboration with the county and the cities, and then also our jail facilities, which is something that's coming along in the future. We identify people now who are on the brink of homelessness or actually came in homeless and start to connect them to services prior to release, so they're not being released back into the communities homeless. They're looking at trying to get them into, um, probate, like probation, services that, um, sends them directly to rehabilitation or transitional housing. And again, our station liaison, you guys have a wonderful staff with your special enforcement team that we work very close with in trying to identify where sites might be, individuals who need help, and they work off of citizen complaints, they work off of citizen tips, they work off of, uh, word of mouth, and just knowing the community. They drive through your city all day long, every day, they know where people might congregate, they know where transitional people might be flowing to and from, passing through, where they're gonna stop, where the retail stores are getting calls for service that might alert them to individuals who need help. So, we work, we work closely with them, and, um, and that's the kind of approach where we're working at, at the station level. Correctional facilities also offer, uh, us a lot of wealth of information. Like I said, we anticipate those who are being homeless, um, people who are high, uh, utilizers of the system have a propensity to also be homeless. If somebody's coming and going, they're not actually staying in a home, right? If they're getting rearrested for things, they're going in for a short time, and then they're being released. So, with jail staff, we're working collectively to, to attack that as, uh, as a means of prevention and diversion prior to them getting out. So, it reduces them to coming back as high utilizers, we wanna get them into probation programs and different faith-based programs to get them off the street.
So, quality of life, um, as far as the community members, uh, and when we talk about the reduction of homelessness, um, what are some of the benefits of us and your station liaisons to the community? Um, our job obviously is to reduce, uh, the amount of homelessness in the communities within Riverside County, um, and with that, the objective is to make the community members feel safer, um, around their homes, around their businesses, um, and in turn make parks, parks safer, uh, cleaner environment for children, um, and hope to reduce the drug activity. Um, and this also, part of our goal is also to, um, focus more of our attention on the homeless, so that patrol-level deputies aren't constantly responding to these calls, um, so they can focus more of their time on higher priority calls. Um, so, that's part of our job. Uh, community education, uh, one of the things is, uh, I'm sure everyone's driven by a freeway or a community center, and we've seen, um, panhandlers and center medians are off the freeway on the off-ramp, and we'll see people giving them money. One of the things we do ask is that the community members don't do that, um, 'cause essentially, we're, we're enabling them and contributing to, um, part of, of, of the things that make them homeless. Um, so, with that, we ask that instead of giving them money directly, that people that wanna help contribute their time and efforts to, um, ending homelessness with the organizations that we work with. Some of the challenges that they face, obviously, the longer they're homeless, um, the more challenges they face, whether it be, uh, maintaining sobriety, uh, finding jobs, um, a lot of them, like my partner said, they're in and out of the jails, they're in and out of the correctional system, whether it be for drugs, trespassing, warrants, et cetera, um, and with that, they're building a criminal history and thus making it harder for them to get back up on their feet. And then, the benefits for the homeless is, like he explained, um, rehabilitation for substance abuse, um, getting the services they need for behavioral health, and, uh, finding, finding, uh, finance, finding housing. And then these are just some photos of local encampments within Riverside County. It kinda gives you a, just an idea of the different types. So, like on the left, you'll see someone literally just sleeping on the side of a business, so Seven-Eleven or, or, you know, a restaurant, and then on the right, you'll see these encampments that are pretty elaborate, um, located kind of out of sight. These are also a few throughout the county. And then these are some, this is, uh, the current, well, there are several case laws, this is the one, um, currently out of Boise, Idaho, and, uh, this is basically what we're dealing with right now, which states that, um, it is not illegal, it is not a crime to be homeless, just being homeless in itself. Um, granted, we know that with, with homelessness, oftentimes there are crime, there is crime involved, whether it be trespassing, loitering, squatting, drugs, et cetera, but being homeless, just being homeless is not a crime. Um, and this is kinda what we're, we're dealing with right now as far as transients and encampments in, on public roadways or public sidewalks, um, that without, without it being private property, um, we're not allowed to, to touch right now. It's just more on it.
Let me make mention really quickly, a- as we, as we take the approach, um, to ending homelessness, we, the Ninth Circuit made the decision, it was upheld, but that doesn't deter us from our outreach portion of what we're doing. So, specific to, um, the enforcement side of it, which we often have to do, the outreach side does not quit, right? So, we've taken on the mantra of helping people without handcuffs, and we wanna emphasize that that's always our first and primary goal, is offering them the diversion program, connecting them to resources that they need connecting to, and being that liaison. We've driven people to rehabilitation, we've connected them to faith-based organizations, we've driven them to shelters, and getting them on their feet is, is our goal. So, although that is, that's what's come down from the Ninth Circuit in terms of enforcement, I know you guys have your camping ordinance on hold at this point, um, we, as a department, and especially the, the police agency for you guys for the city of Eastville, is committed to offering those diversion programs through, through the homeless outreach team. So, this was a recent concern that we wanted to share with you guys, and, uh, this individual, we wanted to give you a little tidbit about what happened. It's, it's public record now of the death, but we wanted to make mention about this individual because it was, it was unique. Mr. Watts Kittleson was, was a possible transient, we don't know exactly the details behind it all, um, but he was a deceased male located outside of one of your businesses in the twelve, twelve thousand five hundred block. Um, at this point, the cause of death is unknown. We don't have a, a cause of death that's listed on, for public record at this point. I spoke to our, our staff at the department, and they've just been unable to do that. But we, what we wanna do is make mention of a few things, is this person was transitory in nature, there was no local address here in your community, right? In February of 2018, they were in custody in San Bernardino for a warrant. In August of 2018, Ontario PD had, had a fifty-one fifty hold on the individual, and then we had no contacts prior to them being in our jurisdiction and within your city. So, people often come and go, right? But we wanna be preventative in our approach, and this individual was just one person that we just didn't know about. Oftentimes, citizens are gonna make, make us aware of these people that are coming and going, they're panhandlers, they're new individuals, they're coming up, they're frequent flyers in our communities, and as an agency, policing agency, we want you guys to know our approaches to outreach to them, to get out there, to contact them, to build relationships, and to offer them the resources that we can. You guys have a wonderful, we did a cops with clergy recently, and we have a pastor that's one of your local pastors that approached us on how they could work with the homeless outreach team, and they, I guess they rent space here at the, I think it's at the, um, the movie theater? Shopping center, on how he could assist in doing things to, to better serve your community. So, you have individuals that are contacting us, we recently put out a video on how people can get connected to us, they're contacting us from our local communities on how they can get into the process of helping and benefiting their communities here within Eastville to help people who need a leg up. So, we're here for any questions you guys might have.
Thank you very much, deputies, for that detailed presentation, appreciate you coming out. Any questions? Councilors? Yes?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering, is there anything in, uh, specifically we can do as a city, whether with an ordinance or some type of policy that can help you better do your job?
So, we have sat down with staff recently, and we are kinda taking an approach, I, you guys have things in the works at this point that we're just trying to fine-tune a- and waiting for some decisions to come down from, from the federal court that will really help us do that, um, at this point. I, I really believe you guys' approach as a policing agency is right on. You guys are out, your policing, your police that are assigned to your, uh, city are really giving us a lot of feedback on where we can approach people, who we can contact, and they take detailed, scrupulous notes on how often they're, they're visiting with people. So, I think at this point, we don't have really a, any more direction we can offer, but in, in the near future, we'll be sitting down.
You had mentioned earlier about private property and its hands-off. Is there anything we can do to?
So, if it's private property, privately owned, um, obviously, we talk to the property owner, and we say, hey, you know, we've got a transient issue, we've got an encampment issue, do you desire prosecution? Would you like them, you know, to be removed from your property? And ultimately, it's up to them, it's their responsibility. We strongly encourage getting what we call six oh two letters, or trespassing orders on, on file. Once that's in place, then we can come back, you know, within a couple of days, maybe a day later, whatever, and say, hey, you know, you've been, you've been informed, you're not allowed here, it's now a day or two later, you're still here, it's time to go. And at that point, we can effect an arrest, you know, and ha- and it is the property's owner responsibility to have that encampment, if there's an encampment, cleaned up. Um, so, private property, I mean, it, it's up to the owner, and, and we strongly encourage it, and that seems to be the most, uh, effective and fastest way we can get through that.
You, you actually hit on one of the, that was, I was gonna mention a six oh two letter.
There's also some things that we, we also wanna make mention, like lighting. We love to sit down with a lot of your business owners, we have tips on how we can get lighting involved, camera system, surveillance, on how you can have preventative measures to really make that your business or location less appealing for an encampment.
And my last question was just gonna, I noticed you have, uh, twenty-three hundred is the number for the countywide, but do you have a specific number for our city?
Your point-in-time count last year was very low. Um, I think you guys listed at one. So, um, again, the individuals are transitory in nature, we know that people do come and go within your communities, we understand that that's something that happens, you have a freeway close by, you have other cities that, um, have different demographics and dynamics within their cities, so we do know that there are individuals that need help, and we, we're asking the public to always help. They can call us, they can call a hot team at any time, and, uh...
Contact and post-public, so.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
No problem.
Councilman, sorry, if I might just add, uh, we, we worked with, uh, the police department and, and along with your guys' encouragement, and we put up signs that said it's okay to say no to panhandling. We have those at all the major entrances to this, to the city, uh, I think they're like thirty-six by forty-eight signs, so you can see them from the roadways, um, and we have additional signs, should any business want to add them to their retail establishments or, and we're looking for other places to add them throughout the community. So, uh, we work closely with the police department on, on those signs, and you can see them as you enter the city from a number of locations. So, just wanted to, a- and we also work really closely with our property management, our retail property management, to get those six oh two letters, so that our police department can, can effectively, uh, address any challenges that we might have on our, our private property.
Councilmember Pot? I have a one comment and a one question to follow. Uh, just also with you had mentioned lining, just kinda, you know, just something that we have done proactively, we've, we've built an agreement with J C S D to retrofit all our, you know, all our street, all four thousand of our streetlights to a nice, more brighter LED, uh, light that I think will probably play a, a role in, in, in helping this, this issue. Uh, my question is in regards to the stand in a river, that, that riverbed that we have down there, and knowing that what, what transpired in the city of Anaheim, it brings a lot of concern to our residents here because it runs, runs along the same riverbed. Are, are you currently working with any agencies, like the Army Corps of Engineers, certain counties, uh, a- a- any properties of, you know, the, different jurisdictions that run certain properties in that riverbed? 'Cause I know it's not just one agency, it's a multiple of agencies. Um, if you're working, uh, with those agencies, um, to, to just kinda be prepared for that situation that may occur, and if so, what, what are, uh, what are the steps that are, are you guys taking together?
Yeah, so, we are working with a number of agencies at this point, so you, you know, the, the river bottom stretches from one, one end of the county to just on the north side here into another. We have been working with flood control, we're working with, uh, fishing game, wildlife, there's a lot of areas that we have concern about, which is, is a valid concern for your citizens as well. We do make regular routine trips down there, um, we forebite, and we get in there to actually offer those diversion resources prior to, so we've had some success of getting people out and actually having them housed and in temporary shelters for the time being. We understand that as, um, individuals are displaced from one county to another, that might affect your city, and it's the truth of the matter. And as we work in, in collaboration with our partners like in Anaheim and Orange County at the line, we are actually taking, um, aggressive steps to documenting who's coming into the county, who's living in the river, what migratory pattern... what migratory patterns they have, and how can we assist them. So diversion is always our first line of defense, and we want you guys to know that that's our our commitment to it. At this point, you guys don't have any long-term residents within the river bottom here, within your your swath of land that you guys have uh is within the city. But there are people outside on both sides of of the the river bottom, and we've made numerous trips on on many occasions into the uh river bottom, and we are aggressively working to offer those resources to people. We know that the rains come in, we know that the colds come in, we know that fires often are a concern. And so we are working with a number of agencies to address that. I don't know how to best describe it, other than our efforts are ongoing and they won't stop as we go into the this next season.
Is there any plan in the future moving to formulate some type of committee among other agencies, or is that some, or does it already exist?
It does exist. So we have uh under the C O C, which is a continuum of care, the umbrella for the county, we have a weekly meeting where we collaborate and case conference with other agencies that are committed to those same individuals. So again, we're not the only ones spearheading and tackling these these problems. We have behavioral health that goes down with us, clinicians from uh the Department of uh Social Services, you know, all the different areas and resources that we have, we literally sit down weekly and and case conferences these individuals.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you deputies for coming out.
No problem, thank you guys.
That brings us to item number four point two, which is the introduction of the city's newest employee, the city's economic development manager, Ms. Kimberly Wright. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Kimberly, if you can come to the podium, I would like to introduce you. Kimberly draws from over twenty years of economic development experience at the County of Riverside Economic Development Agency, known as the E D A. At E D A, Kimberly began her career working with the Economic Development Division, where she managed and attended trade shows, she was in integral in responding to business expansion leads and assisted with the county's fast-track permitting process program. Um it's still not faster than ours. At at the time, but we'll teach her how fast is fast. At the time of her department departure from the county, she was the assistant marketing manager uh for the E D A's twenty-two divisions and provided support to the county's executive office and board of supervisors. Kimberly acted as a marketing manager, a media spokesperson for the county signature events, including the Riverside County Fair and National Date Festival and the uh Jacqueline uh Cochran Air Show. Throughout her time with the E D A, Kimberly partnered with many of the county's cities for various economic development outreach and attraction efforts, including attendance at the International Council of Shopping Centers I C S C uh conference. Kimberly earned her bachelor's degree from the University of California Riverside in Economic Administrative Studies and lives in North Fontana where her husband and four, with her husband and four children. We are excited to have Kimberly on our team, and she has already hit the ground running. And we had some great meetings yesterday with some brokers and developers here in Eastville, so we're very excited to have her on board and and see how she can help add value to our businesses and attract and retain our businesses in Eastville. So uh welcome, uh Kimberly.
Thank you. I just want to say, Mayor Lorimer and City Council, I'm so excited to be here. I really look forward to working with each of you and so thrilled to be a part of such an amazing team, so thank you.
Welcome to the team. Do you?
Sure.
No. Okay, now I'd like to invite Glenda Chavez. This is item four point three, which is the presentation of the blessed recycling all-stars.
So um what do you mean, everyone? Um here today in honor of America Recycles Day, which will be celebrated um throughout our country tomorrow, November fifteen. I wanted to um however, we are starting a little early here in Eastville. Um there's two recognitions that I have tonight, the first being um the recycling all-stars. Every year, the city and waste management um select two residents and one commercial business as our recycling all-stars. This year, our recycling all-stars are Adam Huhimato, Thomas Harville, and Evergreen, which is a commercial real estate, um realty company that manages the Eastville um Marketplace Shopping Center. Unfortunately, though, hmm I wasn't able to get anyone to come. Um Evergreen is in Arizona, and um they did try to get someone here, but they did want to express their um appreciation for this recognition. As you know, they are a very vital um establishment here in Eastville with so much growth, all our new businesses um that have been coming there. And their commitment to making sure that their tenants are recycling right and often um is very um admirable and exemplary. So we really did want to recognize them for those efforts, and we work closely with them since they are in Arizona. Um it's a great partnership that we all have, and they are committed to being um good citizens um here in um Eastville. However, um my second recognition, are they here? Our troop, oh, they have a, okay. Um I wanted to recognize PAC two thousand seventeen Eastville's Cub Scouts, who are the recipients of our two thousand eighteen Waste Management Think Green Grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Think Green Grant um grants are part of our company's ongoing national effort to encourage the development of local community engagement and environmental so um environmental solutions that build sustainable communities. We are happy to say that um we applied for this grant on the scout's behalf, and we presented an idea where we will be working with the um troop to develop an educational campaign to let people know the importance of recycling, however, how to do it right. Um there's been a lot of changes in our industry, so we want to make sure that current, I know adults, but also the future, uh understand how we are doing um how, what we need to do to do it right. So um can I call PAC two thousand seventeen to please come up? So I could present to their check. I um even though he's not here, um Mayor Proton Todd Rigby was the person who recommended the troop, so I do want to say um thank you to him, even though he's not here. As a mom of a new um bear, I am super excited to work on this project with these fine young men here. They're so well behaved. So I'll, do you mind if I squeeze over here? I'm gonna have you hold the check so that we could take a picture, and I'll go behind over here.
You gotta hold the check and show it, there you go.
I have, I have one now, it's so exciting. Thank you so much for coming, I fully do appreciate that. It's for you. Thank you.
But um we'll tell that clear out. Now we have item five, our student liaison report, Mr. Benita.
Good afternoon. Um at Harada Elementary, the K kids are sponsoring a Hug for Troops event this week where they'll have a table set out up for all students and parents that do drop off their students in the morning, and it's a activity where they get to make cards and write letters for all active military. And these cards will be sent over the Thanksgiving holidays and also the Christmas holidays. And I also noticed it this morning, they're like, Hug for Troops and all of those wonderful signs, where like, it's just they're showing their appreciation towards our active military members and obviously our veterans. They also started our Coins for College campaign, where our students are able to collect coins for grant scholarships to seniors graduating from Roosevelt High School that had to attend to Roda Elementary. Last year, they were able to obtain six different grants, which contained a five thousand dollars, I mean, five hundred dollars. So sorry, two former Harada students, scholarship recipients come back to our school and were able to talk to students about how Harada helped them shape their plans for college at the end of the year awards are placed. Eleven sixteen is when we will be hosting our Mustang Madness in the gym. Mustang Madness is basically a way to kick off our basketball season with both boy and girl seasons. Um there's a whole bunch of events, there's a free throw, a competition, and it's boys against girls, and sometimes teachers against students, and this is a fun event that many of you should go. Um last Friday, A is being announced their theme for their winter formal dance at both lunches, and the theme is the music of the night, or also the Phantom of the Opera. And they will be having their winter formal dance at the Riverside Municipal Auditorium on Saturday, December fifteenth. On Tuesday, October thirtieth, the Roosevelt Boys Varsity Cross Country Team attended the Big V, the Big League Cross Country's championship. Runner Michael Sagun was an all Riverside County athlete this year, top seven boys in the Riverside County, and ranked third junior in all of Riverside County as well. Michael was recently awarded the twenty eighteen Big V I I I League Champion and looks to having his flight, his highest flight at the twenty eighteen C I F Division One Finals on Wednesday. Oh no, yeah, Wednesday, November, oh, today. Yeah, they do have C I F finals today, I'm so sorry. And um they, the Boys Varsity Cross Country Team also did place first in league, so they automatically qualified for C I F prelims. And the Girls' Cross Country Team lost by one point for their first place. So at their last league finals, they lost by that one point two king. Um Seven-Eleven is also sponsoring a one thousand scholarship, that Seven-Eleven located off of Hamner Avenue. And additionally to the one thousand dollar scholarship, they are giving out one thousand dollars to the student body, where primarily that will be used to help foster students that paid for an A S B card. An A S B card is a membership that's around forty-five dollars, where you get discounts at dances and free entrances to all home games, and they'll also be providing that one thousand dollars for free entrances to our winter formal dance and prom dance. And Mr. Lorimer and owner of that Seven-Eleven will be presenting that big check on Friday at ten thirty. Um and it's not more of a report, but it's like a question coming from the students, 'cause there's like a street called Citrus and Granca de Vista, it's right located by the entrance of the back parking lot. And they wanted to know if they can make the right lane or right turn only, because it will cause for less traffic to appear. So there's any possibility that that's possible. They'll be interested about it. Yeah, and that's where I report. Any questions?
Thank you very much, we will look into that. Any questions?
Can you clarify, right turn from which road?
Okay, um it's coming down Citrus, say you're coming from Hamner to s- down Citrus, and you want to turn right onto the back parking lot. The street is, it literally says Eleanor Roosevelt High School, so I don't know if it's an actual street.
It's it's the driveway entrance to?
Yeah, into the back park.
And making that approach going westbound, right turn only, is that the question?
Yes, that right lane, white, right li- turn only, 'cause it'll cause for less traffic.
Okay, our public works director's in the audience, he's taking scrupulous notes, I can see. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, thank you Brian. With that, we will go to item number six, which is public comment, not on the agenda, bless you, bless you. Are there any members of the public that have uh any comments that are not on the agenda?
We have received one public comment card.
One public comment.
And that's from Betty Wu.
Ms. Wu.
Good evening, um mayor, councilman, uh city staff, and the public. Um I need to follow up on with uh since last meeting about the uh green belts maintenance by J C S D. Um I want to give you some updates on that. Ever since I clarified, oh, the history was um a few years ago, um I made a request and was turned down because um plants was dying. Um mulch were blown away throughout the years. And it was turned down, and this time is because I um being aware of uh there is a municipal code. Um so I filed a complaints, a compliance uh request with J C S D. And finally, over a week, uh after a couple of calls, and they came out to do the work. Um when they notified me and I asked them how it's going to carry out the work, and they said we'll be replacing the dead plants and the mulch. And I said, okay. And however, when I got home that night, um completely was surprised as all the good, healthy, mature plants were all removed, completely molded down. And so the place, they replaced all the smaller um plants, and now the whole green belts on Schleisman, that particular finished section is all completely flat. To me, this is a couple of notch or maybe few notches uh stepped down than the original work. Uh original work, although some plants died, um but some left are providing vertical sculptic, sculpture kind of look. So it's multi-three dimensional and give the beauty to that section. But now it's completely just flat and no more. And this is, I I understood is um J C S D's atten- J C S D's atten- intention and, uh, that's what they are planning to do. And I ask is, are there any city guidelines to that for the maintenance? If so, if none, we should probably implement some in the future. And, uh, for, um, immediate, uh, remediation, I do not know what do you wanna do to, uh, to interject, uh, with J C S D. And also, uh, for the plants they replaced, um, they have, uh, hold on. Okay, uh, one more, just I, I hope the city also has, uh, uh, guidelines for the replacement plants, um. African iris was a perfect plant for the spot that they removed, removed from my front yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Plot, you have a question?
Nope. Yeah, actually, I just to comment, um, did they also, i- it would be really good too for the, the board members of J C that they do meet as well. They are an agency that meets and, um, have you by chance gone to one of their board meetings? Okay, perfect. I just wanted to see if that was a clar- if that was clarified.
She, she also called me a couple of times while I was on vacation last week and I took her calls and I connected her with Todd Corbin and, and, and helped her get um, the connection with the staff at J C S D. So, uh, I, I worked really closely with her last week to make sure that they were responsive and, and Todd reached out to her, uh, via email and and sent out some of his management email to her house, to my understanding.
And who approved your vacation?
You did.
Alright, thank you for the follow-up. Are there any other members of the public that have anything to mention that is not on the agenda? Mr. Clark, no more speaker cards?
And that concludes public comment.
We'll now show for the record that Mayor Protem Rigby has joined us. Welcome. Do you guys mind?
Unfortunately not.
Oh no, that's okay. We'll go to item number seven, which is the consent calendar, items seven one through seven nine. Are there any items that the council would like to pull? Seeing none, staff?
We've had no requests.
Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Tesari, second by Mayor Lormore. Mr. Clark?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Item number eight, public hearings. We have no public hearings going to item number nine. Now that uh, Mayor Protem Rigby is here, do you wanna go in order or do you wanna go how we decided to? Okay. So for those of you who are paying attention, we're just gonna go in the regular order now. Item number one, City Manager Employment Agreement. Ms. Vega?
Uh, yes, thank you, Councilmember Rush, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers Plot and Tesari. Um, for you this evening is a proposed, uh, employment agreement with Brian Jones, your current interim city manager, um, to make him your permanent city manager. Uh, so I, I'll be very brief. Um, as you are aware, we, um, the city council was on track to do, uh, open recruitment. Um, however, ultimately it was determined to not pursue that route, um, and to negotiate, uh, a employment agreement with Brian. You met with me in closed session, gave me, um, authorization to negotiate that agreement. I did. And the agreement for you this evening is within the parameters of what you authorized me to negotiate. Um, the agreement is pretty straightforward. It has a three-year term, uh, base salary of two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, uh, plus vacation accruals, um, management leave as other management employees receive, um, the same insurance benefits that other employees receive. Um, if there's any specifics about the agreement you have questions about, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the council? Oh, seeing none. Um, I have one concern though. We need to get him a different nameplate, cause it's wrong.
Yes, a new nameplate. We'll put that on the top of the to-do list.
So here from the audience, I'd like to speak on this item. Mr. Plot.
We've had no requests.
Alright, I thought you were waving at me. Oh, with that, I will entertain a motion, item number one, nine point one, excuse me.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Lormore, second by Mayor Protem Rigby. Mr. Clark?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari? Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations. It'll stay on file for one year, doesn't it?
And I'd just point out that as part of that, it was, uh, um, yeah, the motion was to administer both of them office, so Stephen should do that.
If I could have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Jones.
Do solemnly swear to support and defend.
Do solemnly swear to support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
From all enemies, foreign and domestic.
From all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay. All you, go ahead and see your shot.
Thank God.
Okay. Alright, everyone look over here. One, two, three. Thank you. One, two, three.
I just wanna say thank you very much to the mayor and ca- uh, Mayor Protem and council for, uh, the vote of confidence and trust. Uh, as I told staff earlier today, this is a, a vote of confidence and trust in City Hall a- and all the hard work that they have all been doing and I just get to serve alongside them. And so it's a real honor and, and privilege to work with a talented team here at City Hall and um, we're always focused on effectively, uh, uh, exceeding the expectations of Eastville and, and we work really hard to do that every day. Some days we win, some days we learn, but we're always trying, so. Um, we appreciate the vote of confidence and we're excited to continue to serve all five of you. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will turn to item nine point two, which is the first reading of ordinance regulating wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right-of-way. Ms. Vega?
Yes, another brief one for you. Um, this is, uh, essentially the same ordinance that was presented at your last council meeting, uh, with some changes. One was a clarification that Councilmember Rush had pointed out, writing, um, the exemption for facilities on the city-owned streetlights and they will not be subject to permitting under this ordinance. I've clarified that issue. And then also in response to Mayor Protem Rigby's concern regarding pedestrian and bicyclist use of the sidewalks, we, um, tightened up some of the language and included a requirement that, um, it, so it already stated that equipment must be undergrounded when feasible. And then we've added that if it's not feasible, the equipment must then be set back at least two feet from the edge of the sidewalk and be, and be screened from public view to the extent that, that is feasible as well. Um, and there was already an ADA compliance, um, provision in the ordinance. So if, hopefully that clarifies the issue and the concern, um, and I'm happy to answer any other questions about the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Does the council have any questions on item nine point two? No? Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we received one public comment card and that's from Christopher Fulger.
Good evening, city council, city staff, members of the public. In an age where technology is fans, is advancing every minute, we try to keep up with the latest innovations. We live in an age where people cannot go ten minutes without their phone, and why would they? We use our phones for everything, communicating, sending emails, text messages, et cetera. However, when it comes to newer untested technologies, it's best to scrutinize and ask whether or not they are needed. In the case of small cell towers, more commonly referred to as five G, the city of Eastville would do just fine without five G antennas mounted on streetlights. The current systems we have in place have proven to meet our demands. Rather than worrying about people bumping into ground-mounted equipment, how about informing your constituents on what it is you're trying to install? I would recommend that instead of talking in euphemisms, forget about even considering such a project and be happy with all the wonderful things that four G provides us with.
Thank you, Christopher. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
A move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, Mr. Clark?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. That moves us to item nine point three, which is the TUMF, Payments Directly to Western Riverside Council of Governments. Mr. Reno?
Thank you, Councilmember Rush, members of the council, members of the public. Um, I do have Daniel Ramirez-Cornejo in the audience today. He's from WR cog. He'll be here to answer any questions that relate to this particular topic, um. But just to introduce this topic, what we're doing here is introducing the, uh, idea of delegating the, um, payments we accept on behalf of TUMF, the Transportation Uniform Management Fee Program over to WR cog. Um, currently, city staff handles all that now. As developers come in, have projects for various land use types, they'll come directly into the city. The city staff will have to then, um, calculate the payments that are to be made to WR cog, um, hoping that everything works out okay with the calculation, so there's no errors. Um, once that is done, then a check is remitted back to WR cog and it must be done so, uh, within thirty days. So there's multiple chances for errors. And what we'd like to do is eliminate those possibilities of errors and the timeliness as well. So if this goes over to WR cog, what will then happen is the, the annual audit that we receive or review will be eliminated as well. So it'll, it'll save on some cities' resources. It'll save on the fact that we might not have any payments, uh, penalties, uh, anything like that nature to WR cog. And WR cog will handle that directly. And so what'll happen now is that developers will go directly to WR cog. WR cog will then calculate the actual payments in coordinates, in coordinations with city staff. And then the developers will actually be able to make the payments directly to WR cog using a, uh, internet-based system, a web-based payment system, and they'll handle everything directly. And so what this item is doing is the first reading, and so what we'll do is we'll bring this back to council in December. And if the ordinance is approved, we'll have thirty days from December twelfth, it'll take effect. The idea is that, uh, around mid-January, we can start this where we'll have a try-and-out period where the developers could come in here still or they can go directly to WR cog. I believe we're targeting April first to actually have this transferred over to WR cog so that the city is now separated from these type of payments. Um, so with that, um, that concludes my report, but if you have any questions for myself or Daniel, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item?
We've had no requests.
No requests to speak. Uh, I have a few questions, but I'll defer to the council unless you guys have any other questions.
I do.
Mr. Plot?
And then Mr. Tesari?
Thank, thank you, Adam. Uh, yeah, just one quick question. Are, are we? Trying to think about how to phrase the question. Are we, are we educating our developers as of now through the process? Or are we just kinda doing a by-case-by-case scenario as it comes up?
Yeah, I, I think this is new because I believe WR cog just passed their, their ordinance through their executive committee on October first. So this is something relatively new. So a- as they come along, I believe we're gonna start trying that out and see how that works out. But Daniel, if you wanna talk about that as well, what experiences have you had with, you know, uh, other agencies and how that's worked?
Thanks, Ernie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As far as our Daniel Ramirez-Cornejo Program Manager at WR cog for the TUMF program. As far as, um, informing the development community, we have had multiple stakeholder meetings. We have our Public Works Committee meetings. Uh, we have informed, uh, the B I A, um, stakeholders that we work with, developers who enter into credit agreements with your agencies, we have notified them. And the only, the only questions that have come up are whether the credit agreements, who will be tracking credits or whether the, whether that process will change. As far as credit agreements, those will still be entered into between the member agency and, um, developer. All that WR cog would be tracking are credits being issued for the building permits that are being pulled within the development.
Okay. Mr. Tesari? Uh, just for, uh, I wanted to know if, uh, we had any, uh, outstanding developer deposits left?
Um, I'm not aware of any. Uh, I can check on that, but as, as far as I know, I don't, I don't believe we do.
Okay, cause I, I think this is a good idea. I, I would hate to see ourselves get into that situation again.
Yeah, I agree.
And you would also, obviously, WR cog would be responsible for refunding, uh, excess as well.
Yes.
And nothing would be our responsibility.
Correct. Yeah, they, they, they would have a period about forty-eight hours to resolve any, any issues with the developers themselves. Work on that between them two and then get that, uh, they would give us a report once it's done to let us know the ac- actual calculations and what was remitted on, on behalf.
Yeah, so as far as the process goes, we developed worksheets that your city staff will still submit to WR cog since you have the land use authority. Your staff knows what the project is gonna be that's coming into your agency. We don't want a developer, we've had instances where developers have come to us and said, I'm building a thousand square foot building when it's a hundred thousand square foot building. Um, so we still expect that your staff will submit those app, those worksheets to us. We would calculate, um, collect the TUMF from the developer and, and send receipt back to your staff and to developer and for you to issue either building permit or certificate of occupancy.
Alright, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Um, clarification, Ernie, you had mentioned in your presentation that if the developer has WR cog calculate the, the TUMF payment, but they can still pay it to us, is that still gonna be open in and whether they can pay it to us or, or pay it to WR cog?
Once that, uh, period, uh, this, we're gonna have a period of about mid-January to April. Once that April first deadline is in place, they'll be going directly to WR cog. So I, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so what, what we're expecting is about a third, uh, a month, um, timeframe where a developer could either still come to the city or go to WR cog. What we don't want to happen is developer coming to your agency, ready to pay their final fees, only to learn that they have to go to WR cog. Um, so we're, we're leaving a, a thirty-day window.
Okay. Yeah, just for some background, there was, uh, at least two executive committee discussions on this and, and it was kind of a mixed bag. I was originally not crazy about it. Um, it was, I guess, watered down for lack of a better term in not making it mandatory, but making it voluntary. So do you know how many agencies today, I think Beaumont has, and Beaumont's kind of a special case, but do you know how many other, um, WR cog members have signed on to this and how many are keeping to their own?
Yeah, so as of today, um, after our, our executive committee did take action on October first, we reached out to all of our agencies for interest in whether they wanted to move over to this process. As of today, there are about half of the member agencies, so about half of the TUMF collections have mentioned to us that they will shift that process to WR cog.
And if I recall the discussion correctly, residential's pretty easy. It's just, uh, a building unit or building permit, but it gets more complicated in the calculation when you get into commercials. Is that primarily the source of some of the confusion and concern?
That's part of it. Where we, what we've had issues with on the residential side are the credit agreements where the developers, they're not paying their TUMF, they're receiving credit as they're building public infrastructure, um, as they're building TUMF facilities. So we've had instances where developers have still paid TUMF while they're receiving credit and we have to issue refunds on the backend.
Okay, but the city would still have the ability to enter into a credit agreement if we thought that was appropriate for economic development reasons or, or what have you?
That is correct.
Okay. I have no additional questions. Did we receive a speaker slip in the meantime?
We've had no requests.
Uh, Mayor Lormore?
Yep, thank you. Um, so we do pride ourselves on speed of getting things done here. Uh, so I believe the question was answered earlier that after April, we're, we're not gonna be.
Correct, it'll be a hard cut-off at that point and it'll be going directly to WR cog and they'll be handling. and they'll be handling everything from there.
So that would in turn mean that any developer, it's no longer a one stop shop. They now have to go to WR Cog, is that right?
That's correct. In terms of the TUMF payments, and we we they don't have to go to WR Cog physically. We will be we will be exploring options for developers to pay electronically. So we don't see it that they have to physically go down to the Riverside office to pay their TUMF.
Okay, part of your presentation earlier, you were talking about calculations. Would they have to then, as part of those calculations, can that be done online?
Correct. So once this, once the city staff sends us what the project is, we calculate the TUMF. We send that back to developer in the city and the developer can then go on to our online portal and pay the TUMF.
Okay, so.
You can download the sheets now and go through the calculation just to see kind of where you're you're sitting as far as fees.
Excellent.
Mayor Potem Rigby?
Thank you. You said that you're exploring electronic payment, so there's nothing in place yet?
Right now, we don't have anything in place, but we are meeting with vendors to allow this option.
Okay, kind of just the whole one stop shop is is the mayor was mentioning. I'd be hesitant to to approve this right now with no electronic payment because you are now, you're forcing the developer to go to two separate places. And it's not real convenient for them.
We are, as WR Cog, committed to having that in place by the April 1st or the middle of January deadline in terms of developers not having to go to WR Cog.
Yeah, not not that I disagree with it, but just to play devil's advocate, they still have to go like the school district to pay their school fees. And there's some other things that are still kind of outside our realm, J C S D school district, things like that, so.
No, I totally, I understand that, but I think rather than us trying to make it easier for our developers, I think we're kind of backtracking until we have that in place. I mean, if we are 100% sure that by the time we roll this out, that we're going to have that online option, then I think we're good. But I think otherwise, we don't want to backtrack on us being the one shot, one shop stop, one stop shop, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Rigby, one of the challenges that we've had experienced is we get challenged, we get audited on what the TUMF fees that we collect. And if we make an error, the city of Eastville is is held liable for that error. And so the audits usually happen 12 to 24 months after we we receive payments. And so one of the challenges that we've that Western Riverside Cog has been experiencing with the local cities is that oftentimes we've already given a letter of occupancy to a developer and we realize and the local agency might have realized, oh, we under collected an impact fee. And then the local agency is is responsible for backfilling that. And so with some of the confusion of how to calculate TUMF fees, what what Western Riverside Cog is doing is trying to create a a a clear way for developers to have their pro-rata forms done ahead of time. We could work with Western Riverside Cog to have them calculate it and maybe we we accept the payment here and then just, I mean, we're down at Western Riverside Cog two or three times a week. So so we can deliver it for a developer too, so that they don't have to make that trip down there. If that if that's the case, it's not that big of a a challenge. We're not hearing any pushback or feedback from our development community that they're they're actually excited that they're that the people that are regulating it are actually going to be collecting it so that so that their fee that they're collecting is correct. And it and it reduces our liability at the city. And there's been some cities that have had made errors in excess of $50,000 or $100,000, which is is a big error.
Our finance department doesn't make errors though, so I'm not worried.
No, our, no, ours doesn't.
No pressure, Ernie. No, I appreciate that clarification. I think, yeah, if we can, if we can work together with city staff, with WR Cog, just to make sure that we do have something in place, if it's something, I don't know if we can accept a payment and act as a trustee for it or how that works legally. But if we can just work together to make sure that we do have something to make it convenient for the developers. I think that's one of the things that we hear a lot and we're proud of and we take pride in our in our city of being very developer friendly and expediting things and making it just convenient. So if we could just work together to make sure that something's taken care of, thank you.
Follow up. Yes, Mayor Larmour. So for the, the next time this will be heard is in December?
December 12th.
December 12th. In that WR Cog is committed to doing this in terms of electronic payment, is that something that you feel will be sorted out at that time?
Correct, yeah. We feel we are we are confident that we will have something in place by then.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, I will entertain a motion on item nine point three.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Tesari, second by Councilmember Plot. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Larmour?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item nine point four, Strategic Planning Workshop Priority Updates. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Back on August 24th, we spent seven hours together talking about strengths, weaknesses, challenges, opportunities for the city of Eastville. September 26th, we brought Level 1A and 1B prior priorities and goals to you. And now we are following back up as promised on November 14th with Level 2 and 3 goals for a total of 14 goals for our six priority target areas. So with that, for Level 2 goals, one of them is the communication and community engagement. And as you saw, we have already released the RFP out for that. The the deadline is soon approaching for that RFP to solicit the feedback and satisfaction from the community of where, how we're working and how we're serving the community and where we can be doing improving. Feedback loops in local governments is critically important to make sure we're hitting the right target and aiming for the right goal so I, so that we're very excited to to do that. Enhancing the community quality of life. And we're going to be evaluating staffing needs and broaden community policing model and study the code enforcement, community policing. And and over this last year, we have enacted seven days a week code enforcement. And we have seen a great improvement in the quality of life and the responsiveness to our code and to our e-citizen app that we have that we're receiving concerns through. Our award winning Neighborhood Watch Program that is just turned one year old that all 29 neighborhoods in residential subdivisions that Councilmember Plot and Rigby and Resident of the Year, Don Pedinger, who just left, started. We're going to be evaluating staffing needs for this and helping how to take the Neighborhood Watch Program to the next level and allowing it to do even greater things in the in the community and create a connection. Also looking for Eastville Leadership Academy and developing the next leaders and the future leaders of Eastville. So really allowing residents to be connected with their local government and be an advocate and ambassador for local government. With the with the finance and budget, that is not our city hall or projected city hall. It is just a fictitious city hall, so don't get concerned because I don't like the architecture. We'll work on it, whoever city this is, I'm sorry. But 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 potential actions, develop an award winning budget for city and then look into options for bond financing or other means for funding a new city hall. We have about $10 million set aside or $10 to $12 million set aside right now in in our reserves for city hall and the civic library and the civic center and evaluate other options to finance the new civic center and city hall library and get that project started and off the ground. If we were to say go to tomorrow, it'd still be three years before we moved in by doing the outreach and and design and permits and and construction. But so strategic investments to grow revenues as well to fund the city hall. For public safety implements, public safety technology. And it's just not the automatic license plate reader, but we're already diligently working with this. And in December, you're going to have a a a report before you on the automatic license plate readers. But we're going to award a contract for purchasing the equipment installation of ALPR on mobile and fixed locations. And what this is, is it's just allowing technology to to catch the bad guys or alert our police department that the bad guys have either entered or exited our community and and pings our nearest motor officers or our patrol officers of the situation in our community. So if we have stolen vehicles in our community or known known vehicles that have been a part of a crime, that our police department will know they're in our community. So identify other public safety technology that can be used to enhance effectiveness and efficiency of law enforcement and first responders. Our organizational development, this is one that's really near and dear to my heart. But potential actions that identify, enhance the customer service experience at city hall. We have an amazing customer service. I shared a feedback that we received from somebody that pulled a permit and said in his 32 years, he'd never seen received better customer service than the customer service he received at our counter. And that's what we're always trying to do. But we want to have feedback and touchscreens and and get that information so that we can measure how we're doing and serving the residents and businesses of Eastville. And then with the financial budget, goal number two, identify creative revenue opportunities. Where we really want to think big and outside the box with, you know, the small cell revenues that you just heard tonight, that could be a new revenue stream for us as we take over the streetlights. Future transit occupancy tax revenue as we develop hotels. Hotels are one of the greatest revenue streams for cities per acre. And then franchise agreements, especially with our solid waste and other opportunities. And look at new and innovative business and diversified property tax beyond 80% residential for economy stability. And so really developing the other sectors of our our revenues. Infrastructure, enhancing mobility and connectivity. Right now, everybody thinks, or many people in Eastville think of drive first and there's opportunities as far as getting to school and and to destination in Eastfield to enhance that. But also to evaluate traffic flow related to the schools and partner with the schools, evaluate bottleneck issues, recover costs from developers, look to develop a connectivity map and master plan and strategically update the general plan elements, including the mobility element. And staff recommends the city council formally adopt the strategic plan goals and priorities for the city of Eastville, including the priority Level 1A and Level B. So we included in this packet, the entire packet. And as soon as you guys adopt it, then we will finalize it and and put it on our internet so that everybody can see where we're going to be focused over the next couple of years to be effective at serving the residents and businesses of Eastville. This was a collaborative process with the entire management team for the city of Eastville. And we worked really hard to put this together and bring back all the tasks and goals to accomplish these priorities. So I look forward to hearing your feedback and providing input on if we if we hit the mark on this.
Thank you very much. And yes, that was my son. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Any comment cards?
We've had no requests.
All right. Questions, comments from the council? I just had a minor comment on item number one. I know that the city of Menifee either is in the middle of or has just wrapped up an RFP for their community outreach. So it might be prudent to reach out to our partners over there and just kind of do a quick debrief with them, who they saw, you know, were similar in some aspects, so.
Yes, yes, we believe we could definitely reach out to the city of Menifee. We've also reached out to a number of other cities on how they've done their community satisfaction. We want to really create this as a scientific model that we can repeat over and over year, over year so that we can really measure, are we improving or or where can we improve each year? And so we want to get a baseline this year and then build on that year after year and get the feedback from the residents and businesses. So thank you for that input on Menifee.
Any other comments, questions for the council? Mr. Plot?
Just want to make the same comment I made when we were going over our our Level 1 goals. Is I'm just thoroughly impressed and I appreciate how organized and set up and just how strategic we are. This is of how we've collaborated together, come up. Thank you, staff, for putting this together as well. Thank you, Brian. Again, it just gives clear direction. You never want to go and blind to things. You don't want to just do things generally. You want to have specific tax plan right where you're setting goals. And these are very, everything that's on here is extraordinarily detailed. It's very specific to a general thing that we want to touch, whether it be public safety, you know, or anything else. So again, thank you again for for being able to help us kind of get all these ideas we want, these all these different things we would love to do, but to prioritize it, put it in a clear direction. It's it definitely helps for the future and to have that, so thank you.
Just so the public knows, we originally came up with 44 goals to do in the next two years. I would need about a staff of 150 to accomplish that. And so I asked council to prioritize it and they identified 14 that we're going to focus on. That doesn't mean that if one of the other 44 becomes a hot issue or something like that or a great opportunity for us, that we can't make this a living document and move it around. But right now, this is the direction we, you know, we're going to take. And we'll come back hopefully quarterly and update you with how we're making progress on this so that you can see that we're diligently working towards all these goals.
Yeah, definitely concur with Councilmember Plot. It's very detailed and I think it's going to be a fun experience to work through these.
Absolutely.
Mayor Larmour?
Thank you. The the there was a picture, I think it's on the third page. I think there's a an accompanying picture with you standing in the back of the truck.
Oh, when I photo bomb the code enforcement team?
I think you got to replace that, but I'll put that one in. But, excuse me. I I absolutely agree that this was a great process, deliberative process. And looking forward to seeing these goals come into fruition. So thank you.
Mayor Potem Rigby?
Thank you. I don't want to be redundant, but kind of the same thing. I appreciate that, but not only that, I appreciate the aspect of bringing this back. Because I think too often you do planning and you do strategic planning and then it gets set on the shelf and then we we review it every year, whatever it is. So I appreciate your commitment to review this, like you just said, quarterly, to to update us. This really helps us, not only as a council, as staff, but as a city, to see where we're going, to see the direction of where we're heading. And then also for us to revisit and to see what we have accomplished. So I appreciate having this and I appreciate us being able to revisit it and I look forward to us revisiting it regularly.
Any other comments or questions? All right, the recommendation is to adopt these as formally, or formally adopt these as strategic plans and goals. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Larmour, second by Councilmember Plot. Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Larmour?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item number nine point five, employee compensation and additional pay holiday. Right, oh, there she is. Couldn't see you, Angelica.
Hi there.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm hiding back here in the corner, easy exit. The item I have before you is to recommend a 5% COLA increase for the employees effective January 1 of 2019, with the exception of the city manager, as well as a paid holiday off on December 31st. This would be a one time holiday paid for city staff. This item is brought to you. Our city manager just spoke about the strategic plan and your request is being fulfilled. We're already working on it. Organizational development, it was Level 1, priority target four and goal number one. We are continuing, we would like to continue to attract and retain the best talent possible and we have an amazing team that works for us. They're dedicated, hardworking, they're accomplishing many goals, excellent customer service and ongoing dedication to the community. To allow this COLA for them would show gratitude to all their hard work and effort. We have not had a COLA increase since 2014. And what we're trying to do is all the employees are unrepresented at this time and we want to keep it that way. We want to keep unions out of Eastville. We want to keep staff happy. And this is one way to go about doing that. Allowing them to have time off with to spend with their families. This would be a great way to show them appreciation. One thing with the holiday, we do realize that code enforcement is top priority for our city and our community. So we would have a staggered schedule and code enforcement would still be working. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have any speaker slips? Seeing none, do we have any speaker slips?
We've had no requests.
Okay, uh, Mayor Potemrigby?
Thank you, um, just a, a couple of comments, uh, just for the public's information, I know you said it, but can you repeat when the last time, cause this sounds like a lot, five percent, you know, just one year? Can you repeat again when the last time was that we had a COLA increase?
Absolutely, the last time, uh, city of Eastville employees had a COLA was December of two thousand fourteen.
Thank you, and then also for the, the additional holiday, that's not just any, um, additional time throughout the year. There's, there's kind of a timing and, and reasons why we did that, correct?
Correct, um, the day that we are requesting is December thirty-first, which is Monday, and we have a paid holiday off on, uh, New Year's Day. So that would just give a break or longer vacation time, and uh, city hall would be open January second. And that would just be this year.
Just a one-time thing, and same thing with the COLA, the COLA is not an automatic.
Correct.
Yeah, um, obviously, I'm all for it, um, I think our staff has done a great job. I think they are, are well-deserving of this. Um, they work hard, for the last few years, we've had a small but mighty staff that has worked very hard and accomplished a lot, especially just even more recently, um, they continue to accomplish this, so I'm all for this.
Absolutely concur, Councilmember Plot?
I, I concur.
Good. Any other comments, questions? All right, with that.
So moved.
Second, motion by Mayor Laramore, second by Mayor Potemrigby, Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Aye.
Mayor Potemrigby?
Aye.
Mayor Laramore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
That brings us to our last new business item, the nine, item nine point six, emergency management update. Eva, Supervisor of Staff, report please.
Good evening, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and members of the public. Uh, the purpose of this update is to provide information on emergency management work, uh, completed by city staff. And uh, during the course of this calendar year, staff has finished work on the five-year update of the local hazard mitigation plan, uh, utilized federal grant funding to update emergency equipment, submitted grant applications for the upcoming grant year, coordinated cert training, updated safety equipment for city hall and city staff, set up communications testing sys- communication systems testing procedures, and updated inventory management systems. In addition, staff attends, uh, regularly attends local and regional emergency management meetings and coordinates with the county emergency management department on, uh, emergency management-related items. Uh, all additional details are available in the agenda staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, good work. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have any speaker slips?
We have no requests.
No requests to speak, council discussion, comments, questions, concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion. You know, it's receiving file?
I have a question.
It's not what it says in my notes. And I'm trying to read the notes. Mayor Potemrigby?
Thank you, if, if a resident wants more information such as the details of the emergency operations plan or anything like that, where would they find that stuff?
Uh, if they call the office, uh, then, well, first of all, they can go on our website, and the emergency management page is part of the city manager's office, and uh, they can find the information there. And if they would like further information, they can contact the city manager's office, and we will be able to help them.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we will receive and file that report, that brings us to city manager, city staff reports, Mr. Jones?
Well, first of all, I wanna thank you all for recognizing my great team here at city hall. They've worked really hard this last year a- and, um, that extra day off for the holidays to recruit and, and uh, recharge with the family, it's been quality time, a lot of them give up a lot of sacrifice and time with their families to serve our residents and businesses, and so I think, I think I, I really truly appreciate you guys uh, giving me the opportunity to, to reward them for their hard work this year. So uh, thank you for recognizing that and, and being so willing to do that. Um, city hall will be closed, uh, the next week, Wednesday, November twenty-first and Nov- uh, Wednesday, November twenty-first and Thursday, November twenty-second, and an observation of Thanksgiving. Normal business hours will resume on Monday, November twenty-sixth at seven thirty PM. We will have code enforcement working Friday, Saturday and Sunday, uh, after Thanksgiving. So just, they, you will see code enforcement out in the community. Um, and they will be assisting Eastville Police Department and shopping centers on Black Friday, keeping a presence to secure people's belongings and cars while they're shopping. So uh, we wanna make sure that we don't have any crime, criminal activity in Eastville dur- during the holidays, and we wanna create the best shopping experience for the inland empire to come and spend their money and buy their shopping goods here in Eastville. And so we put an extra police presence out there, uh, we will have, um, a, a number of surveillance, uh, issues going on, so please don't be a criminal in our community, because you will get caught. Um, so it's, please go someplace else if you wanna get something free. Um, um, cause it'll cost you a lot. Um, as a reminder, our restaurant feedbacks questionnaire is still open, and we want to make sure that we're getting feedback and input from the community on that. Uh, we've already received, uh, thousands of responses. This is a really hot topic for the community, and uh, we met with two brokers yesterday to, to talk about restaurants and how to enhance the quality of our restaurants and the balance of our restaurants so that all five categories have types of restaurants in them in Eastville. Uh, we're excited to share that we have received great response on the RFP for the community satisfaction study. It will close next Tuesday, November twentieth, and we will make a decision in early December to get that going. And then we will do that survey with the community in early January and bring that back to you, um, later in January or February. And this is all part of, the next days are, are, are part of the strategic planning and, and goal priorities. So we're, we're gonna identify all these target areas that we're working on, and then we're gonna make sure the community i- is in alignment with these and use that information, uh, to judge how we're, we're moving in effectiveness and serving our residents and businesses. So this is a great way for local governments to, it, it's the only government that is truly being, uh, uh, having the feedback survey a- and the feedback loop, and so we're doing a really good job here, and we're excited to have this. Um, winter wonderland and tree lighting ceremony will take place on Saturday, December first, from three PM to nine PM in the Eastville Community Center. Don't miss out on this wonderful community event, we're very excited. And then shop with a cop will be held on December eighth in the Eastville Target. Uh, more details to come, but that's always a great experience, and we're always excited that, um, our Eastville Police Department, um, brings in Target, works with our Eastville Police Department to bring, uh, these kids to, to experience what a, what a great experience at, at, at shop with a cop. So uh, I almost wanna be a kid that, I'm trying to get one of the cops to adopt me, so, uh, um, uh, I haven't got any takers yet, so I was trying lieutenant or captain, but they, they said no. Um, but uh, um, I appreciate, um, everything you guys have, have, uh, done to support, um, our team here at, at city hall, and we're really excited about this next year, and we're gonna hit the ground running really hard in January one. Um, and, and it'll be exciting to report every quarter on that strategic planning workshop, so, um, uh, uh, we'll hit the ground running, and, and the wheels will hit the ground, and it's gonna be an awesome experience next year, so thank you.
Thank you very much, any other staff reports? Going once, going twice, all right, uh, Mayor Laramore, start down with you, council discussion.
Um, let me find it, hold on, um, I do, well, there have been a ton of events since the last meeting. We had, um, we have cricket, they play cricket in town, did you guys know that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, everywhere, right? So, yeah, it, it, it's a huge league, was able to go out, check that out, over at Harada Park. Um, I'm looking for my pictures here, one second, I'm going back through, gonna find it. This is for you, Mr. Plot, I'm, I'm, I'm finding it here somewhere. Yes, RCA update, um, maybe. Anyway, RCA protects more, and that's the Western Riverside Council, or Western Riverside, um, Conservation Authority. Yes, uh, they do, they protect, um, not just animals, um, but also wildlife, uh, uh, not, um, vegetation as well, endangered vegetation in the area. And I took pictures, no, oh, that's the issue, I have two phones. Um, at that meeting, and where'd it go? There it is, it's called the Mud Nama, and that's N-A-M-A. It is a, it's native to California and parts of northern Mexico, uh, you guys can look this up if you so desire. They are found in, uh, our part of the county here, and, um, they are in the Borja family, and they are found in marshes and swamps and vernal wetlands. And you can determine where vernal wetlands are if you see these little guys. Um, I, I was, we were informed that you probably shouldn't eat them, well, one, because they're endangered, and two, uh, they don't taste, they assume they don't taste good, but they wouldn't know because they're endangered. Um, Mr. Plot, I'm, I'm looking here, it's, it's cool, it's got this little white flower, or green, just for you. Okay, that's the update, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rigby?
Thank you, uh, this last week we had, or last week, we had a Eastville Schools meeting. Um, the big hot topic as always was traffic, uh, mainly around the Rosa Parks Elementary School. Um, they're working on a few things there, to see what they can do to mitigate that traffic. Um, but it is, one of the, the biggest thing is education, um, educating the parents and making sure that administration helps to, uh, filter that education through to the, to the parents. Um, we met today as a WCE board for the, the CCA, the power thing. Um, everything's moving along, they actually revised the numbers and did a presentation today. And before it was about a two percent savings, and now they, um, with the, all the new numbers, it's about a three percent savings. So it's, it's looking good. Um, the other thing that, on December twelfth, they will be doing a public hearing, and they've requested that the cities post the public hearing also. Um, even though it'll be, it's a WR cog, or a WCE meeting, they've asked that the participating cities in the CCA that they post that notice too. So if we can ask city staff to coordinate with them to make sure that we post that, that note, that public hearing also, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tassari?
I don't have any updates, but I just wanted to, uh, congratulate Mayor Laramore on his victory, and, uh, Jocelyn Yao on hers, she's in the audience. And also, I don't know if a lot of people, uh, are aware, but, uh, Councilman Rush, he's a direct descendant of one of our signers of the Declaration of Independence, Dr. Benjamin Rush. So, you know, I see a few dinosaurs in the audience, like, uh, Mayor Bootsma and Dicky, who, they, they may have known Dr. Rush, but, uh, um, you know. I'm sure he would, you know, he, uh, he was a founder of this great nation, the greatest country on God's green earth, and I'm sure he would be proud of what you helped create here. You're, you're a founder of, uh, this wonderful city. He did an amazing job, you did a great job leading us as the original mayor, and, uh, your institutional knowledge is definitely gonna be missed up here. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate serving with you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Hey, congratulations, Brian. I think it's only fair to give a good shout out to our former sitter ma- city, uh, manager for bringing us somebody like you with your talent and vision. Uh, I think you're definitely an appropriate person to lead us on to the next round.
Thank you, thank you.
And congratulations to the staff, well-deserved, keep up the good work, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Plot?
Yeah, uh, just, uh, just one announcement, uh, the RT eighteen hour chapter, I try to remain as silent as possible in our meeting, but I was elected chair. And actually, my vice, vice chair will be actually Ike Bootsma, as he represents the district two, Tavallone, so we'll be working together, uh, to the, uh, we were both pretty quiet, somehow we both got picked, so. Um, so we'll be running the, uh, the RT eighteen hour chapter for, for this region, and that's all I have, that's it. Uh, thank you.
Let's keep the buses running on time. Uh, two updates, uh, the RCTC quarterly tax analysis is usually pretty dry and bland. If you remember when the governor took all the teeth out of the board equalization, and they have now created the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration Association? Well, their website crashed and everyone lost their money. So they're re, they're going through all of that process right now, and, and there's a whole big deal about, um, they're not gonna get their money this quarter, they're gonna get it next quarter, they're trying to rectify it also. Another example of our state government doing badly, I guess. Um, it all should come out in a wash through first to second quarter next year, but it was kind of a big, big item for discussion today. Um, the only thing from WR cog I wanted to pass on, and this does not roll off the tongue very easily, is the Regional Climate Adaptation Toolkit for Transportation Infrastructure Activities Update. They need to pick another, yeah, item number, uh, six D on the last WR cog agenda. It might be prudent to reach out to Andrew Howard, the program manager for this, to see if there's an opportunity for us to participate if there's anything, it's, they're putting together a local, um, uh, working group, blue ring committee, whatever euphemism you wanna put on it right now, but, um, looking towards transportation, walkability, climate change, that kind of ball of wax, so I told her they need to pick a, a different, uh, and better marketing name for it.
What does the acronym spell?
I, I was actually, that's how I spent most of the art, archog meetings, trying to figure out, um, or come up with a better supervisor stone acronym, but it's R-C-A-T-T-I-A-U, which was like Rick to you. So, yeah, we need to get a better acronym, um. That's all I have as far as that, uh, congratulations, Ms. Yao, for, uh, being successful in your campaign. Um, congratulations, Mr. Jones, it's, it's been a pleasure, I don't have much to say. With the, with the exception of, our first meeting, we held on borrowed tables and chairs, I think from Z rentals. Um, someone brought one of those podium speakers. We had one microphone that we had to pass around, and the microphone was strung under the, uh, table, which was very low, and we had to pass this mic back and forth to speak. And, um, it was, it was, from them, from there to now is, is a world of difference, so. This is a great place, um, I'm excited to be where I am and, and just be a dad and enjoy the, the fruits of all of our labor. So thank you all for your, your time and your commitment and your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, uh, Ms. Vega, are we in need of any additional closed sessions?
No, we completed all the items earlier, there's no need.
The two hours, okay. Uh, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving, there is no city council meeting in two weeks. We will be back, but we are adjourned till December twelfth, thank you.